Go ahead and get started. All right, with the Lander County Commission meeting, Town Board, Battle Mountain. Mine's on all the time. Um, and Austin, Board of County Highways and Commissions, August thirteenth, twenty twenty. And this is also being held also via teleconference. So, um, I'll call the meeting to order, and Brian, do you want to lead the pledge allegiance, please?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and have a moment of silence.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from twelve P M. to one fifteen P M. Any agenda item may be taken out of order. Uh, may be consider, uh, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioner reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Patsy?
Thank you. There has been a lot going on, so I'll try and keep this a little bit brief, but there are a few things that I think are extremely important I would like to share. On the thirty first of July, we did have a NACO meeting, we did do that virtually, of course. Actually, Nevada Energy gave us a, a quick rundown on their green leak on Nevada, their new transmission lines that they're gonna be doing for renewable energy and to reduce the, the carbon goals and such. Actually, we will be meeting with them, I think our county manager in Austin, the end of this month to give us some more information, but it's, um, it's really exciting. It's, it's over nine hundred and eighty-one million dollars in economic activity and over four thousand jobs that they will be bringing in the next eleven years. So it starts with transmission lines from Ely to Yerington, and then they're gonna go Las Vegas, uh, Yerington, and then they're going Yerington, Reno, so it'll take some time, but, um, I'm looking forward to the meeting on, on what's going on, so it's, um, it's, it's pretty exciting on that part of it. And also on NACO, um, a few things I wanted to share, one of our speakers, actually, was, um, see if I can get her name right, Dr. Kristen Averit, that's A V E R Y T. And she has just been appointed the new state climate policy coordinator. The governor's executive order on climate change was actually last fall, the end of last year, but they're really pushing it now on, on how they're gonna reduce everything on our climate change and, and get everything down, so she's with the Nevada Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, and, um, she gave us a presentation. Also, um, kind of exciting, finally, we've been talking about this for some time, but, uh, they have formally established the Bureau of Land Management Headquarters in Grand Junction, Colorado. And, uh, some of their staff, they relocated around the Washington, D.C. area, and many of the staff came out west, so they, uh, they, the Department of Interior, um, they were real excited, we've been talking about it for some time, to get a federal agency out to the west so they can really work with the people in the west, whether it in Washington, D.C., trying to give us guidelines and such, so they thought that would bring a lot more understanding to it. We talked quite a bit about, um, the special session and such, and of course, um, I'll go over that in just a minute, but, um, NACO provided opposing territory in both chambers on the different resolutions that actually went through, um, regarding the removal of net proceeds to our local governments. And I'll skip over to that part because on the seventh of August, the Nevada, uh, General Mines N G M actually had a webinar, and I did sit in on that, and they went through it in, in quite some detail about what these three, that resolutions are, and also was in the papers, so I'm sure you're up to date on most of that. It's, it's pretty scary, and of course, the mines were extremely disappointed because they just got some terrible reviews in, in both the Senate and the Assembly. People just couldn't say anything good about them at all, it seemed like. They were terribly disappointed, and they weren't even called to the table so that they, they could come in. They were contacted two hours ahead of time what they were gonna do on the resolutions, and that's the only time they were contacted. It seems like all the social media is just a cry for them paying more to, um, the public and that they're not paying enough. And they gave a quick rundown on what they've done since COVID nineteen. They said they gave, right off the bat, they gave one point five million to, uh, the governor's COVID nineteen task force, and then they gave five million to the high I eighty fund that went across, uh, northern Nevada for us, and then they gave some additional, let's a hundred thousand to the different food banks and two hundred and seventy-five thousand for food and supplies, and then they gave another one point five million in chamber checks for their employees to support the businesses that were open, so they thought they've always been there, and they have been, and their employees too have been there for us anytime we wanna plant more trees or redo some of our parks or, or something. It seems like they've always been right there, so there's some real scary things about the three resolutions 'cause the first two, um, the one that came out of the Assembly, the A G R one, is a seventy-five, twenty-five split, seventy-five percent goes to general fund, twenty-five percent to the education, so the counties are totally out. And the Senate bill, the, uh, the resolution S C R one, it was a fifty-fifty. Fifty goes to general fund, and then fifty percent goes to all the rest of the Nevada citizens, similar to what Alaska does, but, um, they're estimating the amount it would be to each citizen would be about fifty dollars. That, that's still a lot to some people, and that may change the vote, I mean, nobody knows. And of course, the A G R two, which, uh, kinda shifts it, that's the only ones that it raises the taxes on that proceeds, anywhere up to twelve percent. Um, that's the only one that left the county in there at all for any part of it, so, um, the first two just stripped the counties out completely, and that's more than scary, but we'll be hearing a lot more about that as we go on, of course. On the tenth, I did have an Austin Airport meeting, our advisory board met. Uh, the signs are up now on our military vehicles. There is a delay in the road paving, that main road coming in now, it looks like we won't get to till May or June. Um, the first part is September, we're doing another Navy exercise, um, that they will be using the Austin Airport, the, uh, the helicopter has training exercises where they come in. They said there's, there's no other place that actually seems to mirror what Afghanistan and the rest of them are, like our area right there in Austin, so they love it. They come in and they spend the night in their helicopters, and they, they, um, they do all that training exercises, it's really kind of exciting. Um, they did cancel, um, or they will cancel, I heard, they haven't officially, but they had moved the N B A A Annual Conference to September, and now the word out is that they will be canceling that, too. So I think that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
I had a PULOC meeting, first one in a long time. Just a lot that we talked about, Ken Brown will talk about, he's, he's coming today, Bert?
Supposed to be here.
Okay. No talk about.
Hart.
The biggest thing going on in Lander County right now with the, with PULOC is the Argenna grazing plan, they're close to finalizing the grazing plan for Argenna. And there was a request from PULOC to get a, uh, an update on the R S two four seven seven rates. Uh, right now, there's a state lands meeting, but I did get a call by, uh, Mr. Curry, who's running the outfit, and he said that, I asked him about the lands bills concerning the, the military, and he said that the House of Representatives, for some reason, is ready to move on the Nellis and Fallon issues, I asked him about Mountain Home, and he didn't even know that Mountain Home was requesting, uh, more airspace, he's gonna look into that. Um, that's, that's pretty much all I have.
Okay. Um, I attended to meetings with the hospital board meeting and LIDA. Uh, LIDA was, um, had some in, uh, interesting information. Sheldon Mudd had, had done a, um, small presentation of some potential businesses that would like to come in here, but most of them are attached rail, so he will be coming in in the near future to be doing the, um, uh, presentation, um, on that. It's a little, it's on, mine's on all the time. Okay, so, uh, so he'll be coming in in the near future to, um, do a presentation on that. Also, within that meeting, Lori Price did a, uh, a presentation on the museum and the building that they're trying to get completed, and that, uh, the funding has slowed down, and she received a lot more volunteers just off the board, off the LIDA board, a bunch of, um, us, uh, volunteered to help with some of that. They are gonna have to possibly do it in sections, uh, for the, because of the arch, architect, um, fees and those kind of things, it's kinda taking up more money than they thought, um, but it was a nice presentation and, um, pictures, and it's hopefully that they will be able to get that up and running as soon as possible, so those are the two. Uh, um, on the hospital board, I went, um, and we'll have Jason, um, will be here today to do a presentation on that, but one of the interesting things is the quick test, um, uh, machines that they're going to, I think they're gonna get one or two of them, and he'll do the breakdown on the costs of what it will cost, that they're gonna start having to test their employees. Um, when you get these, um, machines, you have to test your employees, uh, uh, once a week, that's part of the contract, so I don't know how happy the hospital employees are going to be about having to have, and it's the same test where they have to use their Q-tip to go down, so I don't know how many of those are gonna be very happy to have that done, but he'll be doing a presentation on that and the costs and the different things, um, and it ties into the, some of the things that the governor was wanting and the amount of testing that we're going to have to be doing, so I'll let him do his presentation, but those are the two meetings I attended.
I'll report.
Okay. Moving forward. So staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended?
Bert Ramis for the record. Um, so a quick update on the COVID nineteen for Lander County, as we had, still have the fifty-two confirmed cases, currently, we have two active cases and forty-nine recovered. Um, we've had and responded to some OSHA complaints recently, and due to their presence in our community, uh, I've put the maximum allowable limit for county manager to, to spend in a line item labeled, uh, COVID nineteen OSHA relief fund, which I'll touch on later with you guys. Um, Lakin and myself also met with, uh, our auditors, and, uh, we'd like to get, uh, five-year capital improvement project list from any of you commissioners and our department heads as well, uh, moving forward, and the reason being is we have such large fund balances on some of our funds that are unappropriated, that people say they can't take our money, in their opinion is they don't take the money, they've done this in other counties, Washoe County, for example, um, they levy it, so they say your fund balance is so large that we aren't taking your money, but until it comes down, we're just gonna, we're just gonna take whatever you would be receiving for that fund because you don't necessarily need it. Um, so we'll put a, um, five-year plan together and present that back before the board, hopefully at this next commission meeting, so if I can get that from you guys early next week of any plans, of anything you guys may want to or not want to do, at least we can earmark that money, um, to kinda bring them fund balances down, protect our money just a little bit. Um, and then I did speak with Amade's office, and they're looking into ways that we can get our COVID relief money without the governor's strings attached, there are many other counties that feel the same, um, so that has not been left alone. It's just, it's slow moving forward, everything else, I believe, is on the agenda.
All right.
Good job, Bert.
Very good. All right, for public comment, for non-agendized items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or at hand and make comments on any non-agendized items at the board meetings, if any, and discussion of those, um, comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Do we have any public comment? All right, I'm hearing any, moving on, consent.
Muted, unmuted.
Consent, um, agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any, any member of the board or any citizen may request that the items be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge, so. Number one, approval of August thirteenth, twenty twenty amended agenda notice. Number two, approval of February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty meeting minutes. Number three, approval of May seventh, twenty twenty special budget workshop meeting minutes. Number four, approval of May fourteenth, twenty twenty meeting minutes. Number five, approval of May nineteenth, twenty twenty special budget workshop meeting minutes. Number six, approval of May twenty-first, twenty twenty meeting minutes. Number seven, approval of May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty special meeting, um, special meeting minutes. Number eight, approval of June eleventh, twenty twenty meeting minutes. Number nine, approval of June eighteenth, twenty twenty special meeting minutes. Ten, approval of July ninth, twenty twenty meeting minutes. Eleven, approval of July twenty-third, twenty twenty minute, meeting minutes. Number twelve, approval of payroll, uh, change requests.
Payroll change request?
On the payroll change request, I apologize, there's a typo on the bottom for, um...
Bert, if we're gonna discuss it, we have to pull it.
Okay, could we pull that so we could discuss that real quick?
Yeah, let's go ahead and pull that one. For the consent, all right.
Okay, I will make a motion that we approve number one, number two, number seven, eight, nine, ten, all meeting minutes, special meeting minutes, uh, the agenda.
All right, do I have?
I'll second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. So we're gonna go ahead and for the approval of, um, the payroll change request?
Sorry, you have a right now. Um, so the job title, um, that wasn't changed from a maintainer three with the, um, C D L, it's actually lifeguard, so if we can just clarify that?
With that change, I make a motion, we approve number twelve, the payroll change request.
I'll second.
All right. First by Patsy, second by Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on. So, for possible action to approve, disapprove the, uh, payment of bills? So...
I'll, I'll take that one, I have down, um, Ashley, three checks that were for point S. Brian, does that sound right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, then I make a motion that we approve the bills and remove, uh, check number two zero eight six six six, two zero eight five zero seven, two zero eight five eight eight.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Now I'll make a motion for the three checks to point S, two zero eight six six six, two zero eight five zero seven, and two zero eight five eight eight.
Do you have a second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
So we want, did you want to go ahead and move number seven?
Yep.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and take number seven out of order. So discussion and possible action on filing or preparing to file a lawsuit individually or with other interested counties to protect Lander County's natural resources from overreaching state government?
Commander, this is Ted Rivera.
Yes.
I believe this time, uh, I would, uh, the county manager, uh, on behalf of county manager, I'm just for litigation hearing. Close session.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and go into a closed session?
This conference is no longer being recorded. Muted.
Number seven back in again, or do we just go into discussion? Okay, wait, we gotta get Matt Ted back on.
Uh...
Are you there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, so do you want me to read it back in, or we just go ahead and discuss?
You've already read it once, Commissioner, I don't believe you have to.
All right.
Kathy?
Yes.
For the record, just to reiterate, we have good people, so you can let them know we're on item number seven?
All right, yes, we jumped forward onto number seven, so... All right, so where are we going, starting off with this? Do you have a motion on what we wanna do?
So I'll make a motion that we, uh, that we have, uh, the capacity to start an individual lawsuit or to join with other interested counties and invite other interested counties to join our individual lawsuit in the future.
Would we need to state the lawsuit that it's, who is it against and what it's exactly about?
The lawsuit would be against, uh, Governor Sisolak because of the way he is, uh, treating the rural, the rural counties. The mining tax will absolutely destroy Lander County and all our surrounding areas.
It would also be about the legislature, it's not Governor Sisolak himself that's passing these laws.
Okay, so it's the legislature?
Okay, the le, um, the legislature and the governor.
So basically, the overreaching state government?
Right, for the overreach.
So, yeah, so do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
So we have first by Art, second by Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm proud of this motion.
All right, moving forward. So for possible.
Muted, unmuted.
Action to approve, disapprove Resolution twenty twenty dash zero eight to transfer the county's twenty twenty private activity bond cap, P A B C, to Nevada Rural Housing Authority, N R H A. So who do we have?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, since we have to read the resolution in, I'll go ahead and, and take that one. I make a motion that we approve Resolution number two zero two zero dash zero eight, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lander County, Nevada, providing for the transfer of the county's two thousand twenty private activity bond volume cap to the Nevada Rural Housing Authority and other matters related thereto. Whereas pursuant to the provisions of Chapter three, four, eight, A. of the Nevada Revise Statutes and Chapters three, four, eight, A. of the Nevada Administrative Code, there has been allocated to Lander County, Nevada, the amount of three hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-one cents in tax-exempt private activity bond volume cap for the year two thousand twenty. And whereas the Nevada Rural Housing Authority has requested that the county transfer its two thousand twenty bond cap to the N R H A for the purpose of providing a means of financing the costs of single-family residential housing that will provide decent, safe, and sanitary dwellings at affordable prices for persons of low and moderate income. And whereas the county is a local government as defined by the N A C three four eight A point zero seven zero, and whereas Section three four eight A point one eight zero of the N A C provides a procedure whereby the county may, by resolution, transfer to any other local government located within the same county all or any portion of its two thousand twenty bond cap, and whereas pursuant to N R S three four, three one five point nine eight three one A, the N R H A is an instrumentality, located government, and a political subdivision of the state of Nevada, and whereas the N R H A is located within the county pursuant to N R S three one five point nine six three, which defines the N R H A area of operation as any area of the state which is not included within the corporate limits of a city or town having a population of a hundred and fifty thousand or more. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of the county does hereby find resolve, determine, and order as follows. Section one, recitals. The recital set forth herein are true and correct in all respects. Section two, transfer of private activity bond volume cap pursuant to N A C three four eight A point one eight zero. The county hereby transfers its two thousand twenty bond cap in the amount of three hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-one cents to the N R H A for its single-family programs. Section three, use of twenty twenty bond cap. The N R H A will use the twenty twenty bond cap for single-family purposes in calendar year two thousand twenty or carry forward any remaining amount according to the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended for such purposes. Adopted, signed, and approved this thirteenth day of August, two thousand twenty, and we authorize the chair to sign.
So do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on. So, for possible action to create a county-wide policy regarding Governor Sisolak's latest roadmap to recovery and the rest of this. Bert, one more.
All righty, I put this on, um, for some guidance, the way that it stands right now with, uh, the common core math you have to do.
Bert, hold on.
Did you stop at section three?
Did you stop at section three on the resolution?
That's all I have in my book. There's another page, there's section four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
I need to amend my motion.
Do you have it?
I do. It wasn't in the right order. I am continuing with my motion, and I left off on the Resolution two thousand twenty dash zero eight. So, continuing, section four, thank you. Section four, representative of county pursuant to N A C three four eight eight point one eight zero one, the Director of the State of Nevada Department of Business and Industry, the Director, may contact, uh, and we need to change our executive director name to, uh, Bertolo Ramis of Lander County regarding the resolution of, regarding the resolution at seven seven five six three five two eight eight five or by email at B Ramis at LanderCountyNV.org or in writing at fifty State Route three oh five, Battle Mountain, Nevada, eight nine eight two oh. Section five, additional action. The Chair of the Board of Commissioners and the Clerk of the County are hereby authorized and directed to take all actions as necessary to effectuate the transfer of the twenty twenty bond cap and carry out the duties of the county hereunder, including the execution of all certificates pertaining to the transfer as required by N A C three four eight A. Section six, direction to the N R H A, and the N R H A shall notify the Director in writing as soon as practicable of the occurrence or non-occurrence of any term or condition that would affect the disposition of the twenty twenty bond cap. Section seven, representative of the N R H A pursuant to N A C three four eight A point one eight zero three, the Director may contact Diane Arvizo, Director of Home Ownership Programs of the N R H A regarding this resolution at seven seven five eight eight six seven nine zero zero or by email at Diane at NVrural.org or in writing at Nevada Rural Housing Authority, three six nine five, Desatoya Drive, Carson City, Nevada, eight nine seven zero one. Section eight, obligation of the county. This resolution is not to be construed as a pledge of the faith and credit of or by the county or any agent. or any agency instrumentally or subdivision of the county. Nothing in this resolution obligates or authorizes the county to issue bonds for any project, or to its grant approvals for a project, or constitutes a representation that such bonds will be issued. Section 9, enforceability. If any section, paragraph, clause, or provision of this resolution shall for any reason be held to be invalid or unforcable, the invalidity or unenforceability of such section, paragraph, clause, or provision shall not affect any of the remaining provisions of this resolution. This resolution shall go into effect immediately upon its passage. And once again, the full resolution is adopted, signed, and approved this 13th day of August 2020 with the authorization of our Chair to sign.
I'll second your amendment motion.
All right. Kathy made the amended motion, Brian seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna go back on to, um, number three.
Okay, we're gonna change the record again. Um, so, I put this on here because we needed some direction for the county employees, and which way we're gonna go here. Uh, with the governor's, the Nevada governor's common core math, when you finish working it out, there's no way to keep us out of the red zone at certain point, and I'm sure the hospital will get further into this as we, as we, they do their presentation, but, um, so what I'm gonna recommend to the, to the commission is that maybe we can adopt the, uh, guidelines set forth by the state and respond to the White House. Um, right now, we're currently in the green, and they give recommendations, not, uh, dictatorship, so to speak, and I, and I printed these out, we didn't have these at the time of putting the books together. To give everybody an idea of what this is, our first response to the White House was Brother Day, and they didn't get this back to us for a while, so.
So did this information run off then as well?
I'll send it right now.
Thank you.
Um, so, that would be my recommendations for something, it also, it has, you know, if the county is in, if we have an outbreak, there are criteria that we have to meet in here as well, and we have to respond to the White House, but it's something that we can actually achieve, and try to keep our businesses open, and our people still protected at the same time.
Okay, so, by doing this, which I absolutely don't have a problem doing at all, does it, when they come back and say, okay, we're closing, when the state comes back and says, okay, we're, because you're in the red area, and you have, you're not testing enough, and we just had that, this discussion, I mean, when we, you test so many in our county, and we don't have anybody to test, you know, and we're not meeting their guidelines, and they're saying, we're gonna shut down your bars, what do we do at that time?
Well, hopefully, we just address that in that.
Okay, yeah, so that, okay, yeah, I understand that part.
So, so here, they give recommendations.
Okay.
Um, you know, he's not gonna, so if we go back into here, policy recommendations for counties in the red zone. Um, public messaging, you know, wear masks at all times outside the home and maintain physical distance, some social gatherings to ten or fewer, um, do not go to bars, nightclubs, or gyms, use, take out, or eat, um, outdoors socially distancing, and then it moves into a yellow, and, uh, you know, and that moves up to 25 people or, or fewer in 25% of capacities. And then, and then you're in the green where, where you're actually in open county.
Okay, so, we would be going by, just to make sure I'm understanding, we would be going by the White House, um, guidelines?
Correct.
Okay.
Or we're gonna follow the federal guidelines recommended for this Sisalock?
These, these would be the federal.
The federal.
Right.
So, is what I'm asking, is what I'm asking for our county to implement, for our employees.
The federal guidelines are recommendations.
Yes.
Okay, and that's what we need to do, is follow the federal regulations.
Because I don't see how we can stay compliant with, as, as it's been expressed through, through our other meetings and stuff, that we can't stay compliant with the guidelines that are set in place by our local governor, so it, it's gonna start trickling down to where we shut businesses down and continue on, especially if we have any sort of outbreaks.
Well, I'll make a motion that we follow the federal guidelines, uh, for our county-wide policy regarding Sisalock's latest roadmap to recovery, overreach directives.
All right.
I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. Discussion-only update from Ken Brown, representing Western Counties Alliance on Public Land Issues.
Hello, Ken. Nice to see you.
Oh, Ms. Sancho, I think that the hospital was here, that you'd mean you had spoke earlier.
So, um, would you like to go to the hospital? Are you all right? Wait, okay, we'll take you, we'll go jump to next, okay?
Morning, Ken.
Morning, Lander County. Good to be here, Ken Brown, Western Counties Alliance. Thanks for tying on the agenda, I appreciate you.
Off your button.
Thank you for letting us know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'd rather have a green light than a red light. But, uh, anyway, uh, I owe you an apology. Because of the virus situation, it's been very difficult to coordinate, communicate information relating to issues, and I think you're all aware of that. A lot of, uh, process was being done with people in their home, and so, anyway, I'm later than usual, sitting here to, to have a discussion and presentation with you commissioners. The, uh, first item on the agenda is PILT, and you, and I'll always have PILT as number one when I make up an agenda. PILT, as you know, is a, uh, a good program, and fortunately, quite secure. Because I think through the educational process of state associations, groups like mine, that have, uh, tried to share the importance of, uh, of PILT, and, and the value it is, uh, to, uh, the counties and to the land. I'll just make a comparison for two years. 2019 appropriation, 514.7 million. 2020, 515.7 million. Lander County's pay 2019 was $1,474,600. 2020 pay, $1,69,164. An increase of $21,704, and so appreciate that. With the virus situation this year, to, to get a program appropriated for, as well as get an increase, is, uh, something that I felt very good about. As you know, again, PILT helps counties pay for valuable, expensive services on public land. As you, emergency medical, search and rescue, law enforcement, fire control, roads, and the list goes on. Item number two, secure rural schools. Good news. The SRS program was reauthorized for two years, 2020 and 2021. I requested a five-year reauthorization, which obviously didn't get where it needed to go, but two years is much better than one, or maybe none. So, uh, uh, Lander, let's see, uh, again, comparing two years. 2019 appropriation, 237,713,931. 2020's total appropriation, 225,992,600. Now, as you know, that's the way the SRS program works, when it gets reauthorized for a year or two years. That, that initial year, you get an amount. The next year, you get at least 5% reduction, or maybe a little, a little bit more. So, uh, that's, that's the way the, uh, formula was set up when the, uh, SRS program was implemented. SRS is, uh, not a very secure program. There's a number of the federal congressional people feel like revenue should be totally with states and locals. So I've been asked about that, and I says, well, you go back in history, there was a contract between states and feds, of which, they referred to it as a 25% forestry sheet category. So I says, okay. Natural resource production in the forest is today very limited compared to back 20 years ago, for example. And you all know that. Timber harvest, and so forth, uh, and mining, and so forth. As, there's many that don't feel like that should take place. So anyway, that's one of the reasons it's not secure. Another reason, there are nine states in America that don't have forest land. And some of these states, I'm surprised about, and I'll just read those nine states. Connecticut, Delaware, Hawaii, Iowa, Kansas, Maryland, Massachusetts, New Jersey, and Rhode Island. Well, I thought, at least in Hawaii, there'd be an acre or two of forest land, but there isn't. And, uh, but as you know, in the eastern part of America, primarily private land. So your tax base is much easier, if you wanna put it that way, and you don't have to rely on money from other sources, uh, to make things work. Geothermal. Why, that's a, a nice, clean source of energy, primarily used for power generation. I'll just make a comparison of two years. In 2018, Lander County's pay was $283,264. 2019, $359,626, or a $76,362 dollar increase. Uh, that's, that's very good. So things are, uh, doing well relating to that program, uh, in your county. Now, numbers from the Department of Energy for the 2020 pay will come out in November. So I'll generate a new chart when those numbers arrive, and get it out to you for your review. Again, the program really serves, uh, Lander County well. Sage grouse, well, I needed to mention that's still in a holding pattern at the moment. Western Energy Alliance, an organization headquartered in Denver, they have taken a lead with respect to that issue. And, uh, word is that I get now, that if, if we get into a total liberal situation in our government, sage grouse will return. And so, that'll be unfortunate, because, uh, it'll, it'll primarily affect grazing on public land. And you're all aware of that. So anyway, we monitor that issue monthly. We coordinate, still a member with Western Energy Alliance, and they did a very good job, they're an aggressive organization. Okay, item five, wild horse burrow. My word, I hate to even mention that program, you know, as you know, it remains very challenging. Excess numbers remain in some areas. The adoption program hasn't worked as well as it was anticipated because there are many tamed animals being turned back on public land. And you all know, know that. And one of the activists asked me, oh, how do you know that tamed animals are back on public land? And I says, I don't know of a horseshoer that would try to shoe a wild horse. So I says, they've, they've been tamed, and then they've been shooed, and so, uh, that's how, one of the reasons you know that they're, uh, being turned out on, on the land, because they've got horseshoes on, and in some instances, imagine this, a nice new halter's not been removed. So you got tamed animals back out on public land with a halter on. So, uh, I expedite gathers, and the question gets asked, what are you gonna do with them? What do we do with them? When you expedite gathers, well, they're impacting the public land, folks. Now, in some instance, you say, well, livestock is impacting the land. Not nearly like, uh, wild horses and burrows. I says, livestock are on the land on a permit basis, on and off. Wild horses and burrows are there 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And they said, well, the low AUM fee that you pay for livestock grazing. I says, well, if you think it's low, why don't you go to Congress, ask them to do a bill, and implement an AUM fee for wild horses and burrows? Oh, well, I don't think we can do that. I says, well, why not? Just, uh, just, uh, assign the AUM fee, the same on wild horses and burrows as livestock. No?
Question, Ken. If someone releases their own horse, okay, and somehow you can figure out who that horse belonged to, can you do anything?
Well, uh, I would certainly make contact with the federal agency, and I think maybe law enforcement type of thing could be involved, to see if there could be a, a difference that way.
Just go around and inspect her around.
Okay, uh, the, the WHB program has, uh, two, uh, board meetings per year. I try to attend and make a presentation. Some years ago, excuse me, uh, I started, after I was, uh, got out of being a commissioner, I thought, well, you know, there's no county commissioner on this board. And there's nobody representing lives, the livestock industry. So I took it upon myself and worked with others, that, yes, we need to, uh, go out and see if we can't, uh, have a county commissioner put on the board. And, and some years ago, the first one was a commissioner from Salmon, Idaho, a veterinary. So he, he represented the veterinary slot as well as the county commissioner. So now, uh, I believe is Commissioner French from Humboldt County is on the board now. And, uh, I believe I, Caitlin, I believe I emailed the list of the board, did I?
Uh, I don't believe so, but I can only check.
Okay, now I'll, I'll get one over to you.
Commissioner French is also our NAOCO president this year.
What's that?
Commissioner French is also our NAOCO president this year.
Oh.
And so, yes, he did get on the board last year, and we're, we're excited about that.
His, uh, present term expires this year, uh, October 16th of 2020. Now, uh, livestock management, the other one that I mentioned, uh, Steve Yardley, a rancher from Southern Utah, is a board member. And so, we've made some progress that way, at least to be a little more heard at board meetings, and to be able to address, uh, those areas. So especially, uh, you know, commissioners, as you know, your time is well taken, but to have Commissioner French, uh, being a Westerner, in, in an area where there's a, the problem, to be on the board is very good, and I commend that process. Okay, uh, RS 2477 Roads, I continue to assist counties when asked, with their, to, as they move forward with a, a project. And so my question is, where is Lander County at with respect to the 2477 road project? And so my question is, where is Lander County at with respect to the 2477 road project?
We're still sitting in the same spot. We have our map.
Built, and we've not proceeded forward yet, but I'm aware of.
So you're moving forward for quiet title?
No, we haven't done anything that I'm aware of.
But I mean, that is a goal. When you get more of the preliminaries taken care of, that you will submit a package of roads for quiet title?
I don't know which direction we were going to go. I'd love to answer that for you, but I couldn't answer it honestly.
Okay. That's, well, I'll just mention the four options. Quiet title, of course, that's when you submit a package of roads to a judge for him to, him or her to issue a quiet title, which has more permanency than the others.
That's where we're at.
The next one?
Yeah.
Yes. Just to mention about quiet title, Kane County, Utah, some years ago, submitted a package of 15 roads for quiet title action. 12 of the 15 was the judge issued quiet title. And there's been no contestment on that. I'm amazed.
If you if you go and you finish your program and you submit it, but you've missed a couple of two tracks or a road, can you amend it? Or do you just lose that?
Well, I think it would be difficult, Commissioner, to amend after a judge has taken action.
Okay.
But that's a possibility, but it would be difficult.
You got to have everything.
Yeah. You need to have the very best inventory that you can do in your county. And then, of course, as you know, a certain claim to a total inventory or a portion of the inventory, whichever you want to do. But nevertheless, if I can be any assistance, Bert, commissioners, in that with that issue, we're glad to do it.
While we keep you on, Ken.
Clean Water Act, 1872 mining law. Well, at the moment, there's been no proposed amendments for either of those programs. But WC8 is adamantly opposed to amending either of those. Now, as you know, some years ago, there was an attempt by the feds to remove states' water jurisdiction coupled with counties and titled Waters of the U.S., as you well remember, that kind of thing. Boy, that would be a sad day. My word, you wouldn't even be able to do anything. You had to go get approval from Congress, so.
Well, Trump took care of that for us. That was all good.
Anyway, we watch those close. Now, as far as, well, Clean Water Act, as far as the 1872 mining law, there are those in society who would like to see all mining removed from public land. And so my answer to one or two questions, why is the natural resource commodities in the land? They're to explore, harvest, and utilize in a well-managed way. And mining has provided a lot of economic value to America. Okay, I'll hustle along here. Your PLUAC committee, I was on a conference call with them on the 3rd of August, and I always appreciate visiting with those folks, even though it might, occasionally I get there personally, but most of my participation is on conference call. I want to thank, well, let's see, I guess I venture here long enough, but I want to thank you, Lander County, for your support in the past. WCA, coupled with state associations and other groups, put a lot of effort in these issues that are vital to the West. And so I'm sure this is something you want to hear. I'd like to just suggest that Lander County considering renewing WCA membership for fiscal year 2021 at $2,000. Okay.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you. Appreciate your time and have a good day.
You travel safely now.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move forward to Battle Mountain General Hospital. So update family from Battle Mountain General Hospital in regards to the total testing and testing report.
Good morning, commissioners. Jason Blake for the record. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and to give you an update. We were contacted by Bert last week, maybe week before, asking some questions. And we've got several of our medical staff here to help answer those questions from their professional opinion and professional perspective. I see on here it's listed for testing and test reporting. And so I'll try to answer what I can or give a brief dialogue. And then Dr. Wilcourt's got some information. But we at Battle Mountain General Hospital continue to fight this virus. We we understand there's a there's a medical side of this, and then there's a political side of this. We're trying to keep the political out and trying to deal with the medical facts, the medical figures, the guidance that's given to us. That guidance changes often. There's still a lot of unknowns about this virus that continue to to change, and we're trying to be as mobile and as fluid as possible to make those changes as well. We continue to to put our strong effort towards protecting our medical staff and our staffing over there, our long-term care, and also the community that comes in for assistance. We really are trying to maintain a clean environment that keeps us as safe as possible. And so we do follow the guidelines of wearing face masks, making sure that we're cleaning, making sure that everything's sanitized. We have special operations in place to take care of people coming into the emergency department that may be COVID positive and even to the clinic that may be COVID positive. We have been met with a little bit of resistance on some of this, the outside testing and the outside processes. But again, it's for the safety of our staff, the long-term care residents, and the public, the other public that comes into the facility. I can give you a report of our testing, and these numbers are as of yesterday, August 12. And these are tests that we have run in our facility, or we collected the specimen and then sent them off to the state lab. So as of yesterday, we we had tested 957 or performed 957 tests. 849 of those tests have come back negative. 90 have come back positive, but those 90 only represent 53 people because we've had to retest some of them because we, some of these regulations have changed. At first, we were trying to get two two negative tests to clear a positive. Those things have changed, although there are some employers, I've been told, that are still mandating two negative tests. And so we continue to test, and we still get positives.
Jason, I would say, sorry, but so 90 positives.
Yep.
But of the 90 positives, only 53 people.
That's right.
On a national level, how is that reported? It's reported as 90 positives because it would it would make you think that it's 90 people, not 53, which is almost double the statistic, just in that small number. And then if that's how it's happening, you amplify that throughout the United States. Those are some huge increases in numbers.
The positives are attached to a person. And so that when Brandy Bongoa is given, she's one of the first contacts from the state once these positives come back, and then she tracks them and the state tracks that individual as the positive. And so even if they're retested, my understanding is that the retests don't get amplified as the positives. And right now, we still have 18 testers that are pending. The the time of of test result changes depending on what the state lab is doing. At first, we were having great success getting results in three or four days. Then, when everybody started testing, those results started going much higher, sometimes nine, 10, 11, 12 days. But right now, I think we're hanging around four to seven for those results. We continue to participate with the Project Echo training that's provided by University of Nevada Reno School of Medicine. That's on a weekly basis to give us their professional updates. Dr. Pandori is a regular entity on those calls, and we continue to participate there. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Wilcourt from his professional opinion. He can share with you what he's seen and what he's feeling.
Good. Thank you, commissioners, Robin Wilcourt. This has been a very confusing time for all of us because we've had multiple directives coming down from many sources, both federal and local, often conflicting and very often not encompassing anything scientific medically. And it's made it very difficult for us to try and conform to the guidelines to do the best we can, to be within all the legal parameters that have been set out because some of those are in conflict. And of course, we have to then decide what we're going to do in terms of trying to meet the guidelines and provide the best care we can and make a safe place for us all here in this community. So just one of the things that I want to point out to you is that the issue that we face often from the public is the public not understanding what some of the symptoms of COVID-19 are. And it's not the public's fault, of course, but we then meet resistance when we say, "This sounds like this could be COVID-19," and the person throws their hands up in utter disgust and wants to walk out swearing at us and doing all sorts of other crazy things. So I want to tell you what they are so you have some idea of how confusing this is for us to try and define what a COVID-19 potential patient is. So we've all heard about if you have a cough, you've got respiratory symptoms, asthma-like, you've got a headache, people sort of understand that when you say that could be COVID-19. Of course, it could be anything else too. It could be just the common flu or even a cold. But what a lot of people don't realize is that rashes appear, and that's been well looked at now, particularly in the younger patient, strange-looking rashes on the body, an increase in what looks like allergies. So we'll get many people saying, "Oh, no, I couldn't possibly have COVID-19. These are my allergies, and they happen this time every year." Well, it turns out that some of the people who've tested positive, that in fact was their presenting diagnosis. Nausea, vomiting, and diarrhea. You wouldn't associate that necessarily with a virus, but it's a very common presentation for COVID-19, especially in this community. And so what's interesting to me is that around the country, patients present with a different set of symptoms depending on their low carb, which on the surface of it doesn't make sense, but it also shows how little we understand about this virus. But nausea, vomiting, and diarrhea are common in Lander County.
Well.
Yes.
Is it true that if you have COVID and you're tested for the flu, that will be negative? I heard that.
No, we can differentiate between COVID-19 and influenza A, for example.
Okay, so you go in and you get tested, and it says you don't have the flu, but you have all the symptoms, then that would be COVID.
It could well be, but we obviously need to do the testing for COVID specifically. So just based on the symptoms, you can't make a diagnosis. Which leads now to another interesting phenomenon happening around the country and in this community. As a result of us not being able to get rapid testing, we've had to kind of rely on people's symptoms. And if that sounds like it could be COVID, and we've eliminated all the other possibilities, we've asked people to do the, it depends on which time of the year it's been for this, whether it's a 10-day stay-at-home quarantine or 14-days stay-at-home quarantine. We, one of the issues we're facing right now is that when we've picked up a positive and we do contact tracing, some of the recommendations have been, "Don't bother to test the contacts, but just tell them all to stay home for 10 days." The problem with this approach is it doesn't help us know who has in fact got COVID-19. So it means our statistics are not accurate, but probably the public health issue here is that people who may have COVID-19, without us knowing that they have COVID-19 because we're not testing them, and who don't really follow through with their quarantining, are able to spread this around in the community, and we aren't able to do really good tracing after that. It becomes a mess. So that's just one of the issues we're facing for the community at large is because of the lack of testing, we're not able to accurately track through the community who is COVID-19 positive. Now, that is just one thing. The next I'd like to cover is what happens on death certificates. Because this is a, we all know there's been issues with this, but it goes like this. So if we have somebody who has a disorder which could lead to death and probably did cause that person's death, and they happen to have tested COVID-19 positive, we are not putting that down as a COVID-19 death. Now, it has been stressed in other parts of the country where people, for example, have had a motor vehicle accident and died, but also happened to have been tested for COVID-19. To report that as a COVID-19 death, that is clearly absolutely absurd. And we are being very, very clear here that when we think that the cause of death is, say, due to cancer or a road accident, then that's what we're putting down, and it's not being reported as a COVID-19 death, even though you can check that box now on the death certificate.
Dr. Wilcourt, a quick question in regards to that. So are you the one that determines, is Battle Mountain General Hospital the one that determines the cause of death, or is that the coroner's office?
Brian.
Sorry.
Is it the coroner's office or us? It can be us. We can determine the cause of death. Every practitioner is able to do that. And so the coroner only does that if it's a sudden unexplained death. But if we have somebody who's been in our care and we know them well, and the cause of death says it's been a heart attack, we're putting it down as a cardiovascular disorder.
It usually becomes the last attending physician or provider that would determine that in unison or in coordination with the coroner's office.
So I just wanted to make clear how we do that. And we're not being coerced into putting down COVID-19 as the cause of death for political reasons. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Have you seen a rise in bacterial lung infections since people are wearing masks? Because we've got some information that that's going on in Clark County now.
No, we absolutely have not seen that here. But probably part of that can be explained by the fact that very few people here are wearing masks.
That's a good thing.
That may be the issue. There is a potential for that, but, and we have seen that reported. I cannot imagine that's a major issue. It doesn't make sense.
What about oxygen depletion?
Uh huh.
Wearing masks?
Well, we can get oxygen very well. The molecules are very small. They get through even the fine pores in our mask very easily. It feels like you're not, I'm sitting here now feeling like I'm running out of air because that's what happens. But it's a sensation that's not real. And if we put an oxygen saturation device on my finger, it'll show my usual 98% saturation. So there are instances, though, where we are giving people permission to not wear a mask in our presence. And those are people with chronic lung diseases, for example. They do have trouble getting air in anyway, and to impede their airflow would not be a sensible thing. So there are some exceptions that we're making for that. Yeah. I'd also like to actually say, Abby, do you have some words that you'd like to add to this?
For what?
You have some concerns if you want to come and say some words? You have to tell me your concerns if you want to come and say some words.
No, you guys are right.
Okay. So are there any other questions?
I do have, I do have a question. So, and I got it from Brandy, and, and I believe me and Jason also communicated over email about it as well, that many of these COVID cases that are, you know, deaths that are happening, if somebody had COVID in the past and they recovered from it, however, they could link it back to, say they did have a lung problem and, and they died, but they had recovered from COVID, that they are relating that as a COVID death.
Yes.
Is that?
Yep.
That is a true statement?
Yep.
Okay.
That makes, that makes sense.
And then the other thing that I, that I would like to point out, and I don't know, this is more general information for the public, but from what I'm understanding is a lot of life insurances are not covering COVID deaths due to the fact that it's considered a pandemic. Now, everybody, I think, should look into their life insurance, read the fine print to make sure that that's a, a true and accurate statement. I don't know that it applies to everybody across the board, but I think that it's important to spread through our community and let people know that. And I also don't think that it's a, a true accurate description of a COVID death if somebody has recovered. I mean, I've recovered from many colds, and they don't consider it a cold death if I died in an accident. I'm, you know, that's, that's just my perception.
Yes, of course.
I have another question. What's the recovery rate for Corona nineteen?
It's a beautiful recovery rate. If we only knew the, the real base, if we were able to test as well as we should, or maybe "should" is not the right word, but if we had a wish list on how to test, it would be massive testing, much more than we're doing. It probably is zero point one percent. Seems to be around the same death rate as the flu. Why it looks so bad is that we are basically in nineteen seventeen, when the Spanish Flu hit, when that hit the world, nobody at that time had any immunity to that flu. And so we, our bodies are, don't have any innate protection against COVID-19. And so we're seeing what appears to be a horrifying death rate, but it's actually turning out to be not that different from the flu. So why are the numbers so different? Most people in the United States have either had the Asian Flu, influenza A or B, and/or get their vaccinations every year. So we have enormous herd immunity. Despite that, in any given year, between thirty-two thousand and sixty thousand Americans die of flu. So that put, that helps you sort of put that in some perspective. The flu is still a horrible thing. COVID-19 may be no worse, but the fact is we have three hundred million people susceptible to COVID-19 versus possibly only sixty, seventy million people who are susceptible to the flu. So that's why the bases are so different.
And so far, comparing the nineteen against H1N1, H1N1 had more deaths.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And if it's confusing for you, imagine how it is for us.
Yes, yes. It's a, the, the issue as I see it is that while this is unfortunate that it's happened, and it's, its death rate isn't very high, but any small percentage of three hundred and thirty million people is still a lot of people. We've, we've been sort of stuck by creating this great economic catastrophe around us over something that we probably couldn't do too much about. Just as a quick one for you, I calculated that during a period when China first thought that there was a problem with coronavirus and Donald Trump stopping all the flights coming in from China, between three hundred to six hundred thousand people from China, Italy, and the United Kingdom, which were already infected, had arrived in the United States at multiple entry points. And that means we had no hope ever of getting on top of this because with all those people being seated in, there, there had to be hundreds, if not thousands, of people bringing it in over that period of thirty days. And so we, we were unfortunate from the fact that we have such a high number of people who come to this country in any given month, who, who clearly would have brought this in. And I'm suspecting that in the beginning of January, many flu diagnoses were in fact probably COVID-19, but we didn't know that.
Thank you, thank you. There's a number, there's a number of us that had thought that the COVID-19 had come through northern Nevada. I was sicker than I ever had been, my wife, it went through urethra. We thought that we were going to have to cancel the junior high basketball tournament. Kids were just sick, staff were sick. And I'm going back to, when my wife went to the emergency room, they said that she had bronchial pneumonia with a gastrointestinal flu. I mean, these are the signs of COVID-19.
Yeah, we'll never know until people get tested.
But that was before it was announced. No, I, I really appreciate you coming in and talking to us, Doc.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and take a break. You want to go on to another one while you keep trying? Yeah, all right. So we're going to go ahead and go jump into number six for possible action to approve, disapprove, the renewal of the Battle Mountain Airport hangar lease between Four Corners Real Estate and Lander County.
So this, uh, this is for the lease of the hangar out there on the airport. I know that they built the building in nineteen ninety-seven. They've maintained this lease. I'm not sure if that is a fair number or not, but that's for you guys to decide.
So we're leasing that building for, or the hangar for three hundred and sixty bucks a year?
Yep.
And who is for, um, Four Corners Real Estate?
I'd not know.
Ted, are you online?
Yes, I am.
So do we know who the Four Corner Real Estate group is?
No, I assume they'd be there since there's a one-to-one renewed the relationship.
This is the one that says our air ambulance, right?
Yes.
This is our air ambulance?
One of our air ambulances, yes.
Okay, that's who leases the building?
And now is that the only one that's allowed to use that hangar, or is it subleased out at all?
So in the contract, it says they aren't supposed to be subleasing it out. However, they, there is some subleasing that goes on, I think, that it, you know, small town, how things work.
Related to the business?
I don't believe so. Not, not to the, not to their ambulance. Um, no.
If it's related to the business, I've no problem, but if they're subleasing and making mon, if they're subleasing and making money off the lease, I've got a problem with that.
So that, so there is some of that. I believe that hangar is rented out overnight from time to time, and I believe it's thirty-five or forty dollars a night.
And who gets the money?
And that goes to Rick Harless, but I'm not sure how that, how that works. Because I know that Rick is the one who does, you know, who people contact to rent the hangar for overnight use.
Well, I'm willing to help air ambulance all, all we can, but just a little string.
You want to defer this and get a clarification?
Do we have, can we?
Can we table it and we can bring it back before you guys? And, and maybe Rick and Four Corners can show up and present themselves?
I'm in a motion if we can table this.
Okay, and then we can give Veronica a call back here.
So I have a second on you?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hello?
Ms. Veronica, Bert Ramos here with Lander County. I have you on here with the Commissioners. I apologize, and I know that you're, have short time for us, so we'll try to squeeze this in fast.
Okay.
All right.
Your answer is not valid.
Is she on there?
Are you there, Veronica?
I am here, yes. Good morning.
Morning.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and read it again.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Hello, I'm going to go ahead and read it into the record. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Risk Assessment Auctions and Giving the County Manager Direction on How to Proceed After Presentation From Veronica Schankel, Recommended by PoolPAC. All right, you're on.
Well, good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Manager Ramos for the record. My name is Veronica Schankel, and I am President of Pathways Consulting. And I'm sorry I can't be there with you this morning, and I know there might be slight delays in the communication. So try to interrupt me, and I'll stop every so often and, and make sure that I can take questions as we go. I'm President of Pathways Consulting, and my business helps organizations in the public and private sector improve their effectiveness and results through training, coaching, and consulting. I am a twenty-year HR professional with a specialization in learning and development, leadership development, and organizational development. And I served previously as the Organizational Development Manager for Washoe County. I'm also a former elected official, served as the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees until 2018. I'm a proud Devaden for twenty-five years, and through PoolPAC and other referrals, I've done a lot of work with rural counties in Nevada and in eastern California for, for quite some time. I understand from Manager Ramos that the Commission is interested in conducting some type of assessment in your organization, and he asked me to come and provide some brief information and assist you in qualifying and exploring that idea further. And it's an honor to be part of that conversation. What I'd like to do is just share some brief information about different types of assessments and then ask you a couple of questions to help gain clarity on what you're looking for so that the Commission, the, the manager can, can move forward and I can assist wherever possible in identifying the best type of assessment for you. There are many different types of assessments that organizations conduct, and I'm expert in some of them and not others, but I'll try to kind of give you a, a general highlight of what some assessments can be. I'll start with risk assessments, given that that is what's been discussed thus far. A risk assessment is a process to identify specific hazards in an organization and the potential impact if those hazards were to occur, and to explore how those risks could negatively impact your ability, your organization's ability to conduct its business. They're generally conducted around issues of health and safety in organizations, and specifically usually in operational processes. The process is usually a four-step process. You identify what those risks or hazards are that could be impacting the organization. You explore and get data about the current state of those hazards in the organization, which involves some type of audit or what we call a vulnerability assessment to look at those assets that might be at risk to those hazards. And also you do an impact analysis that outlines the impact on those assets. The third step is to analyze that information and evaluate which are critical and prioritize what those risks are. And then the organization from that analysis can decide on what they'd like to do in terms of prevention or mitigation strategies. Now, the one thing to consider about an organization-wide risk assessment is that they have to be managed really carefully. And even though I'm not a, a risk assessment expert, I've been a part of several in organizations I've been a part of. And I know that, and what we know is that they have to be managed carefully because the risk that you identify and expose could also become, could then become more increased liability if they're not addressed effectively through prevention and mitigation strategies. Now, there's a lot of other types of assessments that organizations undertake and vary in terms of scope, whether they're organization-wide or targeted to a specific part of the organization, and also in terms of the type of information that's gathered and analyzed. The organizational assessments can uncover gaps and opportunities in a whole host of areas that could be opportunities that result from changes in the external environment, customer demand or technological changes, or the economy, or even internally with changing workforce demographics. Some areas that assessments often focus on are things like customer service and demand, organizational effectiveness or culture, which look at employee engagement or team effectiveness or team behaviors or leadership. Workforce or talent needs, including training and skill development. You could also look at turnover analysis or do a, or retention analysis. Some organizations look at organizational structure or design because they want to identify what the best reporting line might be, management, uh, your management levels, management tiers, or even job responsibilities or job descriptions. There are financial or resource assessments, technological assessments to assess the need to upgrade, potentially to adapt to changing technological needs. And then a whole host of other process improvement analyses that organizations can do. Organization-wide analysis can be long, lengthy processes. When you do an organization-wide, and I've been a part of several related to organizational culture, team effectiveness, leadership, employee engagement. And they can range anywhere from six months to eighteen months, depending on what the goals and purpose of the assessments are. And so there are a lot of other assessments that can be done on a more limited scope, maybe in one department or one area that focuses on tasks or functional issues. Maybe gaps in resources, maybe human or financial resources. Again, there may be changes internally or externally that drive the need for that. You can also do process improvements, which involve, at first, an assessment of a current process and its responsiveness to the customer need, and then assess, I mean, evaluate any changes that need to happen and implement those changes. As an example, you could look at your administrative or staffing needs in a particular department in the face of increased customer demand for that service. And that might lead to changes in staffing levels or even reclassification of existing positions or even creation of new positions. So there's a whole host of assessments out there. And I know, again, that you've mentioned risk assessments, which is why I just wanted to describe that one more specifically. But I think what would be helpful would be to get kind of clarity on what question or question that you're wanting to explore and where you'd like to get more information. Because a risk assessment may or may not be the right assessment to gather that information that you're looking for. And it might be helpful to, to gain that clarity so that then the county manager can refer and specifically gather some options for that type of assessment based on your dialogue this morning, and then come back to you with specific recommendations for an assessment or even an, an expert consultant to help you through that process. Again, my expertise involves organizational culture, leadership, team effectiveness. But based on what you identify is here to be, I'm happy to help Commissioner, um, Manager Ramos explore options and identify the best experts that can help with that process. So that's my overview, and then I have a, I wanted to suggest the dialogue about a couple of questions, but I figure I'll stop and see if you have questions for me.
Um, after, I've never, I didn't realize that there was a title of, of gap in resources. And so I don't know what you guys think as far as that, as far as title changes and things that have been done within the, uh, because I was the one who brought this in to begin with. But gap in resources are, do we have all the resources that we need within our, our department? So, and I see there's a few areas of things that have been changed over the years that, you know, going from, I'm still one of the people that goes back to a finance director, of, you know, those, you know, tho, that being instead of a fiscal officer or a finance director. And this is just me, you know, just kind of spitballing the different things that have been changed over the years. And the broader education that goes with the people that we already have in here and brought up to a finance director that is, that reports to the Commission. Just, because I, I don't know, having every, you know, when I think that the different offices who report to the Commission, with the, the HR reported to the Commission, that instead of the county manager being all over one person, I think that's where the gap in resources, instead of a risk assessment, is. And I didn't realize there was such a term, so I think is a, a good bird's eye view of that. Correct me if you think I'm wrong. Let that go, you go ahead.
Is, is that a, that's more of a struc- Is that a, that's more of a structural assessment, correct?
Well, it's a structural, because, well, because, and I was going back from, you know, when we had a finance director, an HR director. We had these directors that were, and then these jobs were shrunken, shrunken down. Your finance director was down to a fiscal officer where you had the fiscal officer reported to the County Commission and the broader training and the broader responsibility with that. Instead of it all being lapped under just one person, is where I'm coming from. HR, instead of being part-time, I still, HR Director. And those titles and things were changed and shrunken down. And we're coming to find out when you have all of that, when one person, like the County Manager, has all, if any of these people underneath have a problem, like your fiscal officer has a problem or your HR person has a problem, who do they go to? They can't, I mean, they, when they, when you're over all of them, I mean, this is just where my mind is and how it's been in the past. Go ahead. So, that's where my mind is, go ahead.
Okay, I've wondered where you were coming from before when you asked for the risk assessments too. But, but I think I understand a little bit, but a lot has changed. I mean, many of the counties have an auditor, their own in-house auditor. And they're the ones that go over all of our paperwork before it goes to the fiscal officer. So, there's a lot of things, and we changed some things from the Recorder's Office as such. But a lot of the changes have been because we have a County Manager. And we haven't always had a County Manager. I mean, used to be, years ago, yeah, that we actually just had Commissioners. And, and so, a lot of that is, is, and I have to agree with Bert. I think we're talking structural. I don't see, I understand his questioning and I think we should look into it, but I don't think we need a risk assessment.
Well, no, and that's what I'm saying, now that it's, now that I've heard a gap in resources, that's the type, if I'm hearing her right, when she says a gap in resources, is that a type of reporting venue to see what we need and what we really don't need? Go ahead.
Yes, just to clarify, you can do either a structural analysis or a staffing analysis. You don't even have to call them an assessment. You can just do an analysis of your current organizational structure. You don't even have to do it organization-wide. If I'm hearing you correctly, you are identifying a number of positions which I would imagine fall within kind of that administrative realm, fiscal officer, HR officer. And I'm wondering if one of the directions that you could go in is just to do an evaluation of that administrative area of your organization. Not organization-wide, but just that specific department and more focused?
No, and it was just for that one area. And so, that, and that's how it had been brought up in the past, so.
It was my understanding that these titles were corrected because there never was a finance director position legally. And according to all the ordinances and the regulations, the titles were correct because things change over the years. And that's how you wound up with these changes. To go back to how things were fifteen, twenty years ago, it might even be illegal. I mean, why?
Well, I know we had the auditor recorder, you know, an auditor recorder at that time. And then, because I called around to ask what do they have, you know, and they, what do different counties have? And they have a fi, basically a finance director or an auditor recorder, an auditor within there. And so, which is, you know, broader than a fiscal officer. Because not, sometimes when you hire the County Managers, not all of them are auditor, you know, auditors and have a huge background in that. So, it's nice to have when you're dealing with the, you know, large county funds that you have, you know, that type of person in there that, you know, and the personally have, that they just go, have more training. And it broadens what their knowledge already. So, go ahead Bert, do you have something to say?
All I wanted to say is I can move any direction you guys would like. Because what I don't want to do is move in a direction that makes us more liable later for things that we weren't.
No, and I don't either. So, I don't, you know, I didn't realize that there was such a thing as a gap in resource, just to do a gap in resources. So, are we fine what we're doing? Are we within our guidelines? Are we doing? I mean, is that, you know, easier than doing this big whole thing that takes six, you know, six months? We don't want that. We just want, just an assessment of, is everything that we have in place the way it should be?
So, just to point out, the interest provides the County Manager the ability to pick his team in coordination with the County Commission. So, we assign him that duty, that he's a, he's the professional to run the county. He's, he's the guy that we're saying, okay, you pick your team and it'll be in cooperation with the County Commission. As where an executive director, I don't believe has that power. And then that's why you had your individual, your finance director, your HR director, and these, these individual people. So, we're basically appointing him as...
A team leader.
Right, he's the power of the county outside of the Commission.
Okay, so, and I understand that. So, then going back to, I, to like the HR specifically, to it being a full-time position instead of a part-time position, was that something that this could clarify? Or if you are not clarify, or just, I just, I still believe that that position within a county the size of it is, needs to be a full-time position. But am I the only one within the whole county that believes that? I don't, if that's a fact, then that's a fact and it is what it is. But I just think that that is something that needs, if there's need to be a full-time position.
If we have something that's working right now for Lander County, why would you want to take it apart?
I'm not wanting to take it apart.
Yeah, you are. You just said that you want a full-time HR director.
I still regard, from the day before I was even elected into this office with that as a position, I believe that position needs to be full-time. It doesn't matter. And the person who's in there is doing a good job and I'm not complaining about that. I just believe that that needs to be a full-time position. And so, that's where the finance director, part two. And if I'm wrong on that, I'm wrong on that and I'll own that. But I just thought that bringing in somebody from the outside, looking in and going, okay, no, we're, you guys are fine on X, Y, and Z. And so...
Why would you want anybody from the outside to come in and tell us what to do? I disagree with that.
Well, and I appreciate your opinion.
Oh, I have one more comment. Again, I would default right back to Bart, our County Manager. Basically, we're, we've entrusted him to be able to run the county. So, I would be good with whatever Bart wanted to do. If Bert wanted to say, yeah, I want this assessment, or whatever we call a structural thing, to make sure that I'm looking at things correctly and I'm abiding by statute or code or whatever, I would support Bert. But if he says, things are fine how they are...
That's fine, I agree. And I'll go with that. I agree.
If things are fine how they are, I would be fine with that as well. Because he is the guy that runs our day-to-day.
So, that's fine. We will leave it up to him to decide what he wants.
That's just my opinion.
No, and you're absolutely right. And I don't disagree with that. I trust you enough to decide what you want to do and that, go from there. Truly.
Veronica, do you have something you want to say?
Yes, I, in listening to this dialogue, what I think might be helpful, and I'm happy to help the County Manager explore this question and kind of how to look at what I would call workload or the demand for that service, be it the finance director or the HR role, to kind of look at the need. Look at the need and demand for those services in the organization. And then to evaluate from there whether a half-time position is sufficient, whether a full-time position is necessary, as well as to examine the position descriptions to see if they meet the needs for education and qualifications that has been brought up. So, I appreciate that. I just wanted to throw that out because it can be a very small kind of evaluation of workload and demand for that, for that role and very targeted. And if we entrust in the County Manager to do that evaluation and make some recommendations for necessary changes if they're needed, that would be, I would, I would think would be a very manageable and practical way to go.
I think that all of the changes that have been made have been co-signed by Pool Pack. So, you can do this just as Pool Pack. You don't need any extra money for this, right?
She's separate from Pool Pack. She's just vetted through.
Veronica was just recommended by Pool Pack to present for us. You guys are somebody that's very knowledgeable in this field.
So, I agree with Brian. If that, my suggestion is that we leave it up to you to decide what you want to do.
Then Veronica, I sure appreciate your time on the call. We'll be in touch and thank you very much.
Thank you for having me, Commissioner. It was a pleasure.
I got all the faith in you too, Bert.
So, just to point out again, I mean, it's your success is, you're assisted with your people. So, that's why I want to give that power to you. If you feel like something needs to be done, I'll support you. If you're good how things are, I'll support you.
I agree.
And I appreciate that because as you guys well know, you don't have to be very good, but you have to have good people around you and that's what I'm fortunate to have.
Whatever you want.
The time to address things is during your evaluation.
So, no, whatever you, I agree. Whatever you feel is suitable, I agree. So... So, with that, with no action taken, right, is that what we do or how do we do on that one? With just no action taken, that's fine.
Well, I could make a motion that the board agrees to have Bert build his team and keep us informed on what's going on.
And that's per interest. That's exactly the way it's meant to be.
All right, second?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good, very good. All right. Wait, is he ready?
Thanks. Sadie Sullivan, Lander County Clerk. Just to put on the record and I think to some of the confusions that may have came about or have, as an example, we had three Commissioners who went to five. We had a County Manager, went to an Executive Director, back to a County Manager. We had the Auditor Recorder, went to Finance Director, now it's a Fiscal Officer. We had Public Works, went to Roden Bridge, North Roden Bridge, South and Water and Sewer, back to Public Works. I've been working with Bert on several things. And I think from what I can tell, our code book needs to be looked at because we do have, as an example, we still have some wording in the code book that has Executive Director, not the County Manager. So, for sure, our code book, in my opinion, that we do need to go through that code book because there are areas that are still having two different names that are for the position. So, and I can get with Bert on that and bring that forward to you guys or what have you did, whether it's codifying or what have you. But it does need to be cleaned up because it's not fully clear in the code book.
So, is it still listed, because I think I spoke to you, as far as like Finance Director, is it, has it been changed to Fiscal Officer in there?
I think possibly in some areas.
It's never been a Finance Director. It's always been a Fiscal Officer. There's never been a Finance Director.
So, just the title itself says Finance.
There was a plaque put on someone's office that they were Finance Director and they assumed that they had more power.
All right, so if it says it, then that's...
Sadie, I've already been doing that, working with Ted and that to take all the Executive Director stuff out.
Okay, yeah, there's some there and I think even maybe the Roden Bridge. So, just throughout the whole thing, so.
We've got it all tapped.
Okay, awesome. Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number nine. Is that which one we're on, for bouncing around a little bit? All right, for Possible Action to Approve/Disapprove a Full-Time Austin Water and Sewer Technician One.
He left.
He left, yeah. Do we want to wait for him to be back or do we want...
No, I would represent it for him if that's okay. So, in, in Austin, right now, we put in, when we budgeted, we put it budgeted for only one actual labor and then an office staff. And per the state, we have to have twenty-four hour coverage for that water system. Somebody has to be on call around the clock, which we were going to use the office staff for. They don't look highly on that. So, we're asking for an additional employee up there so we can have that twenty-four hour coverage.
For the record, we...
No, the times two, sorry. The times two is because the sheet that's in front of you, it's only at fifty percent. So, to make it at, because that's how they do it, it was fifty-fifty, fifty to water, fifty to sewer. So, I just doubled that salary that's on your sheet, times two. So, that would be the salary for the one employee.
One hundred twenty thousand total for each?
With perks and benefits and everything.
Is it thirty-five or thirty-eight percent that the benefits are now?
Oh, I don't know. Is it thirty-five to thirty-eight percent on the benefits now, or best?
Is it thirty-five or thirty-eight percent benefits?
The Austin Water and Sewer was split eighty percent water, twenty percent sewer on the positions and all of the budget items.
In general, what?
The benefits.
Is it thirty-five or thirty-eight? Because I know it's high.
I'm not sure. It's, it's right there between Sadie Sullivan for the record. I think it is thirty-five or thirty-eight when you come in. I don't have to break it down for us to know. I think it is right close there are, but I'm not for sure the exact percent.
Close to what, Sadie?
Between the thirty-five, thirty-eight. I don't have the exact.
Do we have...
The top portion's the salaries and the bottom portion is the benefits.
Do we have a base wage of twenty-one thousand annually, basically?
So, it would actually be forty-two.
Okay, because it's water and sewer, so it's forty-two thousand. Okay, right, that makes more sense.
And just a clarification on that because we only, in Austin, we've always had one technician per se. And then, of course, the administrative staff in the office. And I didn't want you to think that because we took it over, Lander County encompassed that, that we decided on two. They have been in non-compliance and we didn't realize that. And I don't think the state did either. I think they were counting something incorrectly. Anyway, so we are bringing it up with compliance.
So, you have, you have group insurance of twenty thousand. That would be times two. That would be forty thousand if you took it back.
Yeah, so the very bottom, on the very bottom of that sheet, it's like sixty, what's it say, like sixty thousand something? So, you would just double that?
Okay, so, my point I'm making is the group insurance, so we're paying that employee, his insurance is forty thousand a year, so almost thirty, that, what we pay for his insurance is almost thirty-five hundred bucks a month, is that right?
I know.
That doesn't seem correct. No, that's way high.
Three hundred dollars for a...
Well, exactly. There's something not adding up.
That's not...
So, this is times two, the salary?
So, I believe maybe is where our mistake is, is the only thing that is times two is the salary. Just the salary, nothing else should, yes.
Correct, correct.
Yes.
Yeah, it's...
The salary is sixty thousand, sixty-two, thirty-two?
No, that's total.
Nope.
No, you're basically taking the sheet in front of you for the Water and Sewer Tech Two and you're going to have another one. You're going to double it.
It'll be two employees.
Two employees. So, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, it's, each employee's going to get that.
Oh, oh, okay. I want to make that make more sense. I was like, I want to play for that position.
All right, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve a full-time Austin Water and Sewer Technician One.
So, we're correcting that, what we're stating, right? That hundred twenty thousand, hundred twenty-four is two people total.
Yes, and I will be back to verify that at the next meeting with solid numbers for you guys.
All right.
At least we have the position now so we can move forward with hiring and I will be back to clarify with the solid numbers. My apologies.
Kathy made the motion. All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, for Planning is up. For Possible Action to Approve/Disapprove a Partial Mass Application for Jay Whittle, DBA Faded Sage Development LLC to split one eight-point-five acre parcel into three parcels. Parcel five dash E, three-point-zero-six acres. Parcel five dash five, two-point-five-seven acres. Parcel five dash six, two-point-five-seven acres located on Faded Sage Drive in Bottom Mountain. APN zero-one-zero dash two-eight-zero dash five-two, Zone A1. This application was approved by the Planning Commission on July fifteenth, twenty-twenty. All right, you're on.
Kyla Bright, well, Kyla Sharp, Planning Coordinator. They're up here.
Hi, Kyla.
Hi, Jay.
Hi.
Jay came before the Planning Commission at the last, the last one and he was approved on the item that you just read in. I have Jay here to speak on his own behalf.
Any questions? I'll make a motion.
You have any questions?
Everybody going to have their septics?
Yes.
Nobody's going to be cut out because first come, first served. Don't wash. That's not legal.
At this time, at that area, there's only eighteen existing systems. If he was to completely build out, not just him but, and the people around him, if everybody was to put a septic in, they would only be at fifty-nine septics total in that area.
And that's not taking a bunch of septics away from other people? Because we are responsible if... Because we are responsible, if somebody buys property and they can't put a septic on it, then we become responsible, I wanna stay away from that.
So if, if anybody else was to va, to, to divide up their land, there's still, what is that, forty, forty septics available in that area?
For how many acres?
That's a, pretty much a whole, a whole section, when you do the one mile.
Six hundred and forty.
There's only forty septics available for a whole section?
Well, technically.
There's only ninety-nine available to start with.
Yeah, there's only ninety-nine.
Right, there's only ninety-nine available, but everybody that buys is, is, gets a guarantee that they get a septic, it's not first come, first served. It is not. Somebody goes out there and buys ten acres and then later they wanna subdivide it into two fives, they have the right to have a septic.
Right, and, and.
And the county has to protect that.
And at this time, yes, that's still available.
We need to look at the future.
How can that be, just so I follow you, Art, how, I mean, how, how can we regu, how does, how can that be regulated, though?
You have to regulate it, Brian, otherwise we're responsible, we'll have to run septic after.
But shouldn't, but doesn't that go to the due diligence of the person who's purchasing the land?
I, I have, I have a, a question about that, is Ted on the line to ask, answer that legally for us?
Ted, are you on there?
Under real estate counselor?
I'm here.
My understanding was it was first come, first serves and that we are not liable for that.
I don't, I think it is first come, first served and it, it's really not a, a current system in, in, in that regard. But we, but when they're all taken up, we can't get more, I think that's what Art's talking about.
If there's a sec, if there's a section of land, six hundred and forty acres, there's ninety-nine septics for that area. We have to protect that, that's our responsibility, that's how.
But we, we have to protect that, but once they're all gone, we cannot, we, the commissioner can't allow anymore to be put on them, but it's, so in that regard, it's first come, first served.
And we can't deny, Ted, could we, if somebody like Mr. Wintle comes here, we can't deny him septic on other people not applying, right? Not that I'm saying for growth, not for overgrowth, but, so like, if they're all gone, they're all gone at that time, right? And if they're all gone at that time, are we required to run sewer out there?
No, that's what, that's what you'd have to take into account, that, that's the policy making.
Wouldn't that be up to the developer or the person who's buying the property, knowing that they're buying raw land? You go buy a, a section out in Utah somewhere, I'm responsible bringing in the power, doing, handling the water, all of that, it's, it's on me. So that's what, that's what I'm, the clarification I'm trying to make, Art.
Yeah, well, if, if there's ninety-nine septics for six hundred and forty acres and we allow somebody to hog up sixty septics in that section, who's responsible? We are, because people pay taxes, they have a right to get everything that you deserve too, Brian. This has been a sticking point on this spot zoning. This has been a sticking point on this spot zoning since I've been a commissioner six years ago. It started when I started going to the Planning Commission and I realized what was going on there and I got that crap stopped.
What, what did Ted say, the legality of it, cause I can't, I can't hear this through the mic.
All does seem in order, so I am going to make a motion that we approve the parcel map application for Jay Wintle, DBA Faded Sage Development LLC to split eight-point-five acre parcel into three parcels, parcel five E, three-point-zero-six acres. Parcel five F, two-point-five-seven acres. Parcel five G, two-point-five-seven acres, located on Faded Sage Drive in Battle Mountain. APN zero-one-zero-two-eight-zero-five-two, zoned A one. This application has been approved by the Planning Commission.
What did, what did Ted say, cause I wasn't able to make out what he was saying, that it was.
What I said, Brian, was, if you can hear me, what I said was that at this point, it's legal to, to adopt these three recommendations.
It's legal to adopt them, there's nothing with, holding.
I'll second the motion.
All right, Patsy made the motion, Brian, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 A vote, opposed?
I think Art, was the question you were trying to ask, is, is one maybe for Kyla, is this spot zoning?
No.
I think that's, that's a question I think Art was trying to ask, so.
No, 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 my question wasn't about spot zoning, I'm against spot zoning, that's what's been going on. But in this case, I'm concerned about one person using up all the septics that are allowed in six hundred and forty acres. Because we will be responsible eventually.
And, and to answer that, this is Ted, to answer that, that's, at this point, those concerns aren't there. But they could be there in the future and we have to watch how many we hand out to one particular person.
So we have, what he's saying is we have to watch how many we hand out to one particular person, but how do we regulate that?
You look at the numbers.
County Department does.
Well, does that go on, is that something that the planning board says? I'm, I'm just asking, I mean, I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Yes, the planning, the planning board, and Kyla, they take first crack at it and then they make recommendations to you.
So Ted, I don't know.
And you have to, you have to decide what your policy is in that area before you make final approval.
Ted, I have a question for you on the, in that case, is what you're saying, if we, so if this was to come in front of the planning and we say, okay, of the sixty-three possible septics, forty of them belong to a specific person, so then we then vote no to that project. We're kind of going against what you just said is the first come, first served, regardless of who the person that comes to us is or not. Does that make sense?
No, it depends on the policy that the county adopts.
So then we need to go back over the policies and adopt.
Yes, ma'am.
Policies so that this does not continue to fall on the planning's lap.
Yes, right now, it is a first come, first served policy and that's what Art is arguing against. The policy, the policy that's in existence today until or unless it is changed.
So everything we are doing today is a hundred percent legal?
In my opinion.
Until the policy's changed, there's not anything we can do about it.
As of today, is, are all six hundred and forty acres out there owned?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, the other thing.
So how many owners of that six hundred and forty property, how many people? Five different, five different owners?
Jay Wintle, for the record, let's clarify a little bit, zoning out there is not spot zoning. It's a large parcel that was decided to be rezoned with a two-and-a-half acre minimum zoning. Half the parcel, half the section was denied rezoning, it's still zoned as twenty acre parcels, so they would use very little septic tanks. Right now, they're got septic tanks and being sold individually. The other half section to the east is within reach of the new sewer lines, so it is perfectly accessible for a developer to bring sewer to from the new lift station over there.
Well, so my, so my question is, all the.
And I went before, I mean, just, I went before the Planning Commission last July, two thousand nineteen, with the plans for Faded Sage Development on Faded Sage Drive, had plans to splits seven parcels and make twenty-five additional par, I mean, twenty-five total parcels, so you end up with twenty, or nineteen additional parcels and that's all the development I planned in the area.
Okay, I get that, thank you.
Which will, will take us up to about seventy septic tanks.
I get that, I just, I wanna say something before I lose my track of thought, so, so if all six hundred and forty acres are currently owned, by five, how many different owners?
No, there's more than five.
Okay, but when those pieces, when that, when those, uh, uh, pieces of land were purchased, was that policy in place that it is a first come, first served basis on these septics? Did, did they buy that, was that something that was disclosed to them?
I don't know if, as, if it would get disclosed to them or not.
So basically, they bought it and then a policy was enacted that could have possibly acted outside of their interest or something that they would have known?
That's not Lander, so it's not Lander County policy per se, we don't have or not have a policy that says that. It's kind of a, a state policy, that, a state guideline, let's say, that we follow. Which is, all they give us is ninety-nine, they don't tell us who or when.
Cause that's the thing we have to look at here, is we have to protect the liability of taxpayers' dollars. So I can kinda see where Art's at on it, I can see that and I can understand what Ted's saying as per now, what our policy is. But that would be the thing that would be tough, if I was a land buyer and I bought that under false pretenses, I might just get myself an attorney in Sue Lander County.
And you're real, real, didn't tell you.
Right, that's my saying, if, if it was disclosed and they knew it, then that burden lies on them.
You can't have a, you can't have a progressive policy, rule, law, that is gonna infringe on other people's rights. And that's what has happened, the way the, the Planning Commission has allowed these things to roll out. Spot zoning, we've got fireworks stored, explosives stored in a residential area.
And that's the only thing I lack is just the, the history that goes behind everything that's happened out there, so.
So, yeah, we don't have policy, but we're going off state guidelines, so it's up to us to create policy, to create or to fix what issues we believe need fixed.
But one of the ways we can do that is to make sure that they don't, that they don't turn around and divide them into half acre parcels and sell them to half acre parcels.
Yes, it needs to be controlled.
Or an acre or that, but that's how you do it, this is all in the guidelines, so.
I agree with that, Patsy, yes.
Yeah.
All right, moving on. For possible action to approve, disapprove of parcel map application for Jay Wintle, DBA Faded Sage Development LLC split two parcels into four parcels, parcel ten dash E, two-point-nine-six acres. Parcel ten dash F, two-point-five acres, parcel, parcel ten dash G, two-point-five acres. Parcel ten dash H, ten-point-three acres, located on Faded Sage Drive in Battle Mountain. APN zero-one-zero-two-eight-zero dash four-seven, and APN zoned A one. This application has, this application was approved by the Planning Commission on July fifteenth, twenty twenty. So I have a question, so now the ones that have been, that you have that are ten acres, can the people that have them that are ten acres come back and try to have, to split those down smaller?
Depending on their zoning, and his zoning is, is for A one at a minimum of two-point-five acres, so yes, about ten acres he has remaining, he can come in and, and split down.
But see, that's where you run into a problem, when you're dealing with six hundred and forty acres and there's only ninety-nine permitted septics, at that two-point-five-seven acres, they would allow for two-hundred-and-forty-nine, so that's, that's the problem. So we, somehow that has to be con, controlled, the size of the lots.
Yeah, we have to correct that, yes.
It works out to about ten and a half acres per se.
Six, six point four. Six point four acres. Per septic. Per septic.
If you stay six point four and above, you're safe, if you go below, you're in trouble.
But unfortunately, we have something we have to correct, because he's been asked, done everything he's asked to do.
Right, no, I understand that, yeah, I understand that.
From this point forward, that we have to correct, so we have a motion.
Jay Wintle, for the record, right quick, to clarify things, we went through this extensively.
What's that?
Cluster development is the way you maintain, I have parcels that were, we kept zoned at twenty acres in their ceilings to offset the septic tank density, I don't expect to exceed mighty development in the area. There's probably eighty percent of the property, don't expect to use eighty percent of the septic tanks in what I own.
So you're kinda thinking with these numbers we're talking about?
Yeah, I, I personally, like I say, we work with planning, I work with planning, Kyla and everything else, and Bert. We have control of the situation in the area, I ain't saying the guidelines don't need to be set forward, but like I say, we gotta have guidelines, you just can't make up, like Art, you just can't vote against current laws and regulations, cause you don't, you vote, you vote guy, you change the law, you don't change. You know.
No, I understand that, so Kyla, you see the importance of the Planning Commission being able to think with that aspect of it, when these are brought to, to be approved, you know? I think the, the density of like this landowner owns this much and they're wanting to subdivide, I mean, all that's gonna have to be, you know.
I think that when we readdress putting together the committee that we had going before to put together the master plan and then go back and change, change some of our ordinances and codes to fit that. I personally, I agree with Ted that I would like to have an outside person come in that we hire, much like we did with Rex Massey, obviously, we need to look at that to kinda help us with those guidelines.
What was the name of our, the guy that was helping our Planning Commission? Rex Massey?
Rex Massey.
Rex Massey, yeah.
Who was a Realtor for Nevada Lands or something, right?
So do we have a motion for approval? Anyone make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the parcel map application for Jay Wintle, DBA Faded Sage Development LLC to split two parcels into four parcels, parcel ten E, two-point-nine-six acres. Parcel ten F, two-point-five acres, parcel ten G, two-point-five acres. Parcel ten H, ten-point-three acres, located on Faded Sage Drive in Battle Mountain. APN zero-one-zero-two-eight-zero-four-seven, and APN zoned A one. This application has been approved by the Planning Commission.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, do you plan on working through lunch?
Yes.
Do you want, does it, does it have to be agreed on, everybody else?
You got some quick ones here, some people have been waiting and then you've got some longer ones.
I'm fine with it, as long as everybody else is getting done.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I guess. Is this Richard? Yes, it is. Richard, this is Bert Rainliss of Lander County, uh, we're gonna be putting you on the, on the main line here in the Commissioner's seat.
Okay, thank you, let me just type that turn off from another call and I'll, and I'll stay on the line, but, uh, thank you.
All right, for proposal, action to approve, disapprove, the, um.
Okay, I'm free.
Reversion?
Reversion of acreage, sorry, wow. Application for Richard Watts located at one-oh-five, oh, one-oh-seven Victorian Drive in Kingston, Nevada. APN zero-zero-three dash one-nine-one dash three-one, and APN zero-zero-three dash one-nine-one dash three-two, zoned R one. Removing center lot line between the two parcels to create one parcel. This application was approved by the Planning Commission on July fifteenth, twenty twenty.
Okay, um, this one is just reverting back to a larger acreage. Um, he, the, where he's building could possibly go over that lot line, he owns both lots. Um, and there's, we saw no issues with this and was approved through the Planning Commission.
I'll make a motion, we approve the reversion of acreage application for Richard Watts, located at one-oh-five and one-oh-seven Victorian Drive in Kingston, Nevada. APN zero-zero-three, one-nine-one-three-one, and APN zero-zero-three, one-nine-one-three-two. Zined, zined, zoned R one. It removing center line, center lot line between the two parcels to create one parcel. Application was approved by the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Patsy made the motion, Brian, second, all right. All, all in favor?
We say, we are.
Yeah, we all say that, fine.
Yeah, I have.
Okay, Richard, I'll give you a call.
Okay, thank you.
All right, number thirteen, for possible action to approve, disapprove, the closure of the Mountain View Golf Course, August twenty-second, twenty twenty, for a wedding event, has been verbally approved by the Lisi.
All right, so is what we have here is, I believe that looking for a name here. Crowe? Crowe, yes, Crowe's paid fourteen hundred dollars to have the golf course for the full day. We couldn't find anything on a fee schedule or how that was done, it was done previously, so after talking to Ted and going back, we went all the way back to, I wanna say two thousand and thirteen, when. when they had approved them being able to close down the golf course. However, to keep us from being in conflict with who we have a contract with out there running the golf course, all fees are to be collected by them and turned into the county for, for the closure of the golf course and cleared through them for the closure of the golf course. The fee, only fee schedule we could find was it was a thousand dollars for a full day closure of the golf course and five hundred for a half a day with the approval of the management through the golf course. Um, whoever that contract may be with. So we need to refund Crowe's four hundred dollars and make sure that they get the approval and clear it with our current contract holder. So it says that it has been verbally approved by the LEC? Is that correct?
What about the season pass holders for playing the golf?
That I'm not, I don't know how this, well, this year it should work really well because we didn't take anybody's money. But in years to,
That's right.
In years to come. That could be an issue. It could be an issue that needs to be addressed. And and just the closure of the golf course, I feel needs to come before the commission, probably not.
That was my only concern was the people that had the season pass and right, and we not collecting any.
Alright, so um, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the closure of the Battle Mountain View Golf Course, August twenty-second, twenty twenty, for a wedding. And it's known that the, the LEC has verbally approved it.
And, and can we add the four hundred, reimburse them the four hundred?
Oh, that the, uh, so Lander County, Lander County Golf Course will reimburse Crowe four hundred dollars?
Correct.
Second.
Alright, so Brian made the motion, Art second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, so um, for possible action to approve.
Was that motion okay?
For a possible action to approve, disapprove the res- um, reservation Lander County Recreation Center, August twenty-second, twenty twenty. And also they request a grant to help put um, on the annual car show in the amount not to exceed two thousand dollars. This is a five oh one C three charitable organization. Alright.
Alicia Price for the record. So um, your microphone.
Just tap it.
Alicia Price for the record. Um, so in the past, um, Battle Mountain Burners has, this is our eleventh year and we've always been pretty self-sufficient. Um, it's just one of our very large donors backed out because of COVID, so um, it left us in a tight spot. So um, we don't normally ask you guys because we know with the procedures of grants. Um, and we try to do it all ourselves normally, so um, this, this is a kind of an abnormality, but um, if you guys have any questions of what we do.
How many cars do I have?
We usually have a hundred or more. I don't know if we'll have less or more. Um, I, I know there's been, I don't know, I heard Durington had more cars than ever, but I, I expect us to have less, just because it is what it is. And um, they can social distance in cars. Um, if we have too many, we'll overflow to the high school parking lot, so. To keep them separated and um, it gives a bunch of the businesses and nonprofits opportunity to make some funds, so. Um, and in the past, we've given a couple scholarships in um, the spring to the seniors, so.
So are you asking for reservation of the rec, the rec center or the park?
Both. Oh, no, we got the park. So what we're asking for is, usually they let us use the rec center and the kids from the car show go swim, which it's all the kids, whoever goes. Um, they can go in there. Um, and then the, um, and then the two thousand dollar donation. And I believe in all years past, except for last year, we actually paid for the pool.
Now, is that gonna be the only event going on that day is the car show?
I believe so.
Do it with the Fourth of July, right?
No, we've always done it at the end of August.
Okay, but what celebration was there at the end of August here? Cause I remember the park being full.
I don't know, okay? We, we've only been the only one for a long time.
Maybe it was a class reunion, I think.
Oh, yeah, there was gonna be a class reunion, but they canceled that.
It used to be the mosquito press during that time and they did the car show, didn't they?
I don't know, we have never, we have never partnered with anybody. We've been doing it for eleven years. This is our eleventh year.
So, do we have any problem with the reservation of the pool?
So we have, the, the rec center hasn't been taking reservations just because of the COVID. Um, people paying per head to come in or however, but just, just.
Right. And I did make a reservation last year, cause I, whenever the um, end of the year is, I do make them put on the calendar, cause we did have a problem one year where I reserved it and then um, they had a party and wouldn't let my kids go in until later, so.
So, is it?
So that's why we, and we did reserve it, but of course, there's been all these different.
I, I know you've always been self-sufficient for so long, and I think it's great if we can help you out during these times especially. Um, and my question is, with our budget, um, we have something put aside for extra nonprofits, but I don't know how much.
So in our miscellaneous grants line, we have five thousand dollars. Um, the three in front of you today is definitely gonna go above that, but I think we might have some room for leeway at the end of the year. We're, I talked to Tom about it, we're just gonna kinda monitor the grants, cause we have some from last year that never got spaced, so.
Okay. And, and if we have to augment, we have to augment, I guess, that's.
Yeah, and I, I, I know the routine, I can never send receipts, which we, we do well over that. I think it usually runs us about seven thousand to do it, so.
The only question I have is usually on, the way we're doing grants now is that we don't just hand you the money.
Nope.
You, you spend it and then you turn it in, so.
Nope, that's no problem.
Spend the two thousand and turn it into us with no problem?
Cause what I'll do is I'll just use my own credit card and then we'll.
Um, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Hold on, Patsy. Hang on a second. So, we can't sit, in the motion do that we're reserving the rec center? So, the kids will just go in, pay and use it like normal. Um, you have an NRS in front of you. These have to come by resolution. So we'll have to bring the resolutions back for all of these, if you approve them.
Can, can I ask a question? To do a resolution for a grant?
Yeah, NRS right here.
There's an NRS that Bert handed out.
If I may, Commissioner.
Go ahead, Ted. Go ahead.
Uh, two four four point one five zero five, which you have in front of you. Uh, what this statute does, it wants, wants counties to give to nonprofit organizations. But in doing so, it says a, it must be done by a resolution which must specify, and that's under three, subsection three, A, B, and C. The purpose of the grant, uh, the maximum amount to be expanded in any conditions or other limitations. Now, the reason we don't usually do this is because we don't usually give to charitable organizations. Most of them are not that we give grants to.
So are we, this, um, this is Kathy, are we able to go ahead and approve it now and then have to come back with a resolution because?
Sure.
Is that something, okay.
Yeah, but you might also want to uh, adopt some conditions such as make sure that they follow uh, certain COVID nineteen uh, uh, and maybe weight, weight was liability to the county too. If they're giving them money for an express purpose outside, outside the usual time for grants, then we could be liable if they could place the COVID back to that event, which is highly unlikely. But it's my duty to implore you that we are opening ourselves up to some liability. And to, to uh, get control of that, we should make conditions on it. And the conditions be that they have to, the U safety, the safety uh, guidelines that the county, that the county has adopted previously.
So, we did have to do a COVID plan for another grant, so I can give that to you.
So would the, would it have to be in parallel with the White House plan that we just basically adopted today? That would be the one that we would.
Can I get a copy of that?
You bet. I got one right here.
Now, we would have to.
Well, in the motion.
We're in the green zone. What did Ted say?
In the motion for the uh, for the rodeo, we put in there that uh, the peo- the people putting on the rodeo, the people putting on the events who follow the recommended COVID.
Guidelines, yes.
Guidelines, so you got those there.
Yep, and we will follow those.
Those are the ones that we.
I've already ordered masks, if anybody wants masks, they'll be on the table, there'll be social distancing.
You'll notice in the recommendations that masks are they're recommended, they're not required.
So, we, the NRS, it's before you, is reflective of any grant that we're giving out. And moving forward with our OSHA, with the OSHA plan for business relief. But we have many grants that we've already given that we're gonna have to augment this budget for. So the augmentation and us coming forward with this NRS is all gonna come into one, but it's not per se individually for this set of grants that are coming for you guys today. Everyone that we approved on the budget, we're gonna have to adopt by resolution? Correct.
Not necessarily.
My way, I didn't hear.
If it's not a charitable organization, this statute does say
Yes, this is my character.
Under subsection one, a board of county commissioners may expend money for any purpose which will provide substantial benefit to the inhabitants of the county. So we're not a charitable institution. And we've given grants to non-charitable institutions and we refuse that provision. That provision does not say it has to be by resolution. But it does say that the county commissioners have to find that a substantial benefit is given by this. So that's best done in a resolution, but it's not a mandatory resolution. It's just a mandatory binding, if that makes any sense.
I think I missed a little bit of that. It's not mandatory we do a resolution, but.
I, I would, I would say do a resolution, but if it's not, if it's not a charitable organization, there's nothing in this statute that says we have to do a resolution. We have to find that, that the purpose of the money will provide a substantial benefit to the inhabitants of the county.
Okay.
Not by resolution, so.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna.
I say let's do one for everything, but you just need to know that the statute doesn't say we have to to non-charitable institutions.
If they're not a charitable organization, we don't have to.
We just have to make a binding.
I'm gonna try and finish my motion. If I don't have all of it, yeah, I'll play coast attention and we'll make corrections. Okay. So, I move that we approve. Well, I see. I'm reading that wrong on that part. Okay. I move that we approve the uh, the grant to the Battle Mountain Burners Car Club, not to exceed two thousand dollars for their annual car show. And this is per NRS two four four point one five oh five, showing that it is um, uh, a benefit to our community. And they are a five oh one C three charitable organization.
So, what?
Did you print it out?
Yes, she did.
Yeah, not to exceed.
Yeah, a second.
I'll second.
Alright, Patsy made the motion, Brian, second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, okay, so then I.
Commissioners, the, the motion should have implied that it will be followed up by resolution.
Oh.
I thought it didn't have to.
Well, it does, cause it's a charitable vote, right? And then also.
We ask you for charitable institutions.
I will amend the motion to say we will bring back a resolution on our next meeting, which will be August one, August twenty-seventh. It is after the fact, but we will, we do, will do the um, the resolution after the fact.
Put something in there about following COVID nineteen.
Oh, yes, and to follow all of the, the COVID nineteen recommendations um, from our White House.
Alright, so a second again.
Okay, can I ask one question about the pool though? So since, so it'll just be open to the public? What if we rented it for the day? Cause we let every kid go in there anyways, but.
We're not renting it.
You're not renting it like that, okay. Not even birthday parties, not that? Okay. Okay, then I'll just have Sean take a ticket and I'll pay the bill at the end of the day.
Okay.
Alright, bye.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, very good. Are you ready for this?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm just gonna say.
The Battle Mountain High School Rodeo Club for possible action to approve, disapprove the request for the grant for the Battle Mountain High School Rodeo Club to put on, on September twenty-fifth, the twenty-seventh rodeo in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. This is a five oh one C three charitable organization.
Alright. Uh, good morning. For the record, my name is Suzanne LeMayr, and I am the director for the Battle Mountain High School Rodeo Club. Um, we are in our fifty-first year as an active club in Battle Mountain. Last year, the club celebrated their fiftieth anniversary and had a few of the original club members back, so that's kinda cool. We have always enjoyed the community's support to put this event on without community donations and support. Um, obviously, we couldn't supply the type of rodeo that we do. Um, we bring people in on Thursday, they leave on Sunday, so we bring a pretty significant economic boost to the community over that weekend. Um, due to the COVID restrictions on businesses this year, fundraising looks a little bit different in the community than it has. And I feel, um, I guess I feel a little bit pressured asking people to donate when the economic times have been a little bit rough. I know that we've been producing a boost for the community when we bring these people in, but I just wanted to come to the commissioners today to ask in this time. It's pretty much the same sta- statement Alicia gave you. If you could help us out so that we could take that pressure off the taxpayers who have always supported this. Um, we too have a COVID plan in place uh, through the efforts of J.J. Gogochia, uh, through the state governors. I can't remember what they called that board. It was earlier in June. Smaller economic communities. Um, but I would entertain any questions? I think you have my budget in front of you.
I don't have any questions. Uh, I'll make a motion though. I'll make a motion that we uh, grant the Battle Mountain High School Rodeo Club some help for their uh, rodeo on September twenty-fifth and twenty-seventh, not to exceed ten thousand dollars. It is a charitable organization. And uh, they must follow the adopted COVID uh, plan that the county approved today.
And come back with a resolution?
Yeah, we'll come back with a resolution.
Alright, you have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Alright, very good.
Suzanne.
Thank you very much.
Suzanne, just so you guys are aware, how it works, we don't actually give you guys a check for ten thousand. You guys bring us receipts and we reimburse, or send the bill to us and we pay it.
Okay, so if I spend the bill for my stock contractor? I need the guidelines though that you gave Alicia. If there's an extra copy, you're up in town, get one later.
Masks are recommended, not required.
Yes, sir.
Alright, moving on to sixteen. For the Buster Miller Memorial Junior High Rodeo, for possible action to approve, disapprove funding for the Buster Miller Memorial Junior High in the amount not to exceed five thousand dollars. This is a five oh C, five oh one C three charitable organization.
When, what's the date? Is that a date?
Septem- oh, Sammy Ingleson for the record. September nineteenth, it's Saturday.
Oh, we're gonna have two rodeos.
Nope, theirs is the weekend, uh, well, two weekends in a row.
Okay.
Ours is just a one day for the little guys for, in training for their rodeo.
That's really great.
So our situation is the same. Um, so far, our donations have come under what they usually are due to our favorite COVID nineteen dilemma. So we're uh, um, asking for money also to help us get all those little kiddies prizes. So our, we are self-funded usually with the help of our community also. All our stocks donated, mostly by my sister. And Emma, so we would really appreciate your help this year.
Alright.
I'll make a motion that we approve funding for the Buster Miller Memorial Junior Rodeo in the amount not to exceed five thousand dollars. The organization is a five oh one C three charitable organization. They will follow the county recommended COVID plan. And uh, we will follow this up with a resolution. and uh, we will follow this up with a resolution and I thank you for your time on doing this.
Thank you very much.
These are important things for our community.
It's pretty fun. We don't charge gate fees, so you should all come out and watch. I mean, they're little tiny people, people and they're riding down there on these great big horses and.
I only rode one horse since nineteen seventy eight and that was an experience.
So a second?
Do we have part of the, bringing back for, for resolution?
Yeah, he did.
I'll second.
Alright, alright, Art made the motion, Brian, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright. So, moving on, for the assessor update for independent contractor performance computing regarding Lander County servers and cybersecurity.
Can uh, can we table this one?
The uh, they couldn't compile everything they needed to give you guys a proper update, so.
Alright, so do we have any correspondence, reports, future agenda items?
Can we move number seventeen to the correspondence and agenda items?
Right?
Yeah, yes.
Put it on next time.
It will be, anything that's tabled up will jump on the next one.
So my suggestion is maybe um, contracts? On the prior contracts that we didn't pay out, how would you ask for that? What we discussed before.
I, I, they will be on the agenda.
There'll be something on there anyway.
Yep, um, so the, any entity that I come across as, as I'm sitting in here, things that come up, bills that we're paying, um, if I have questions on them or, um, for example, we have a lobbying firm that, that we're paying a substantial amount of money every month to, I'm having them show up and represent for themselves and, and this commission can decide because some of these appeals are fairly large.
So what about something, um, Gallagher?
Yeah, and then, and then we're going to reach out to uh, Tom and have him give us an update on our levy and the Austin Relignment Project as well and see where we are on the billing for all of that.
Okay.
And where the, where the county stands with what we've budgeted and what we've spent.
Would you find out where that charge came from on the review of the file that showed me?
Yes, that is a lobbying firm.
Okay.
Um, Ken Brown had asked for us to join the Western Alliance again, but we didn't have it on the agenda.
Yeah, that needs to be on.
So you need to put that on for us to join.
Or did we do that during budget?
No, we've always, he's always brought the contract before us and then I believe it's five thousand dollars a year is what we've been paying.
Two.
Two.
Is it, is it two? Okay.
It, it's just very well, it, money very well spent.
Okay.
Alright, that's done it. Alright, so we have a motion, oh, do you have a public comment? Alright, here, any, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Aye? Aye.
Aye.
Alright.